Okay, yeah, we see you. You're caller one now. Turn your speaker on.
Okay, can you hear me now?
It's all right. We had some technical difficulty exacerbated by me sending the wrong teleconference line. So the technical experts are clearing that up back there now. I know we have Commissioner Cole on the line. We have some of the senior directors and staff on video conference now. And as soon as we get Commissioner Salter connected to the conference line, we'll be ready to go.
Hello?
Good morning, sir. Commissioner Salter, we got you loud and clear. So I think we have everybody on the conference line. And I'll turn it over to Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you.
Good morning. Welcome to the Santa Rosa County Board of County Commissioners Commission Meeting. Today is Thursday, March 26, 2020. It is just after 9:00 a.m. We're going to go ahead and get started. Our agenda says regular commission meeting, but this is anything but. We have had to implement new temporary meeting procedures in response to the coronavirus. We're following the guidelines from the CDC, the Department of Health, Governor DeSantis, and our local health department, limiting the number of people present, both staff and public, and maintaining appropriate social distancing. Our chairman, Don Salter, as well as Commissioner Cole, are appearing telephonically in accordance with the recommendations. Our leadership staff has been working diligently to conduct county meetings under this new framework. We ask you to bear with us as we refine the procedures for public input and meeting process. The essential business of the county has to go on, and we want to continue to do that in a way that is as open and transparent as possible. Things have changed quickly over the past couple of weeks. I want to take a moment to thank all of the employees of Santa Rosa County, who have ensured that county services are up and running for our residents. I also want to thank Dan and his leadership team for their long hours preparing and dealing with this response. To our residents, know that our focus is on continuing the work that's vital to Santa Rosa County while working with our state and federal partners to provide you with accurate information. My fellow commissioners and I are working with staff to monitor the latest information and prepare to provide the best service possible for our community. Our emergency management director is in constant contact with state and local officials, first responders, and other experts to ensure that our response and plans rely on the latest information and best practices available. This is a time to be mindful and cautious, but also calm. The quality of the community is shown up. It shows up during times of trial. And you can already see that in Santa Rosa County with neighbor helping neighbor and our churches and other nonprofits reaching out to those in our community who need assistance. We're all in this together, and this too shall pass. So with that said, we open each meeting with prayer and the pledge. And at this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Parker to lead us in prayer and Commissioner Peach to lead us in the pledge. If everyone's present, will please stand.
Please join me as we give our heavenly Father a word of prayer. Dear Jesus, thank you so much for the opportunity, God, for us to gather here today, Lord. Lord, we just first want to say, and it's time that we do know folks are anxious, Lord. We want to reflect back on your word where it says that you have not given us a spirit of fear, Lord, but of power and love and a sound mind, God. And we just thank you so much, God, for all your blessings. God, we're so fortunate still to be here in America, Lord. And I don't want us to lose sight of just how fortunate we are to be in a country that we do have good health care and we do have folks in leadership capacities that are trying to help the folks that are in need, Lord. We pray for our small business owners. We pray for everybody that's been affected financially, Lord, that you will help sustain them, God. We pray for the folks that have been affected physically, Lord. We pray that you'll heal those infirmities in their bodies, that you'll help comfort the family members of those that have lost loved ones, God. We pray for our medical professionals and our first responders that are there on the front line, that you'll keep a hand of protection around them, Lord. God, we pray that you'll bestow wisdom and knowledge upon us today as we make decisions that will affect our county, not only today, God, but also for future generations. We also pray for our leadership at the federal and state level, God, that you would just give them guidance and wisdom, Lord, on the best way to handle these things through our country so that it can come to a quick resolve, God. And we'll be sure to give you the honor and the glory. In Jesus Christ's precious name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, commissioners. Next move to approval of the minutes from the February 25, 2020 budget workshop, the February 26, 2020 regular meeting, and February 26, 2020 special meeting. Any questions or comments on those? If not, I'll move approval of those without objection. Hearing none, it's approved. Now we'll approve the agenda. Any additions to the agenda, Commissioner Parker?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Peach?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman Salter?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
And Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a couple items I'd like to add. One would be, or two of them to the admin. One is, number one would be on policy review or conversation about impact fees in the land development code. The second one would be the recognition of the letter we received from the Home Builders Association. And then I have an addition for the S and D committee under engineering that concerns airport hangars.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Cole. We'll add those for discussion once we get to those sections. Any additional changes, Dan?
No changes.
No changes.
No change, sir.
Thank you. I'll approve the agenda without objection. Hearing none, that is approved. This time, we're going to go to our emergency management update before we tackle the rest of the agenda. Brad Baker's here this morning. Good morning, Brad.
Good morning. Just want to kind of give you all a brief update. We are still at a Level Two activation. And for a pandemic response, that will probably be the level that we would stay at. There's really, you know, as we gear up ESS, we have a lot that are really tie into hurricane response. And there's just some of those we won't need to spin up for a pandemic. So but we do have ESF eight, which is health and medical, fourteen, which is our public information and rumor control, eighteen, which is our business and industry. And then we'll be looking at spinning up our logistics section and also our ESF fifteen, which is volunteer and donations as we work some of our strategies going forward, depending on how the outbreak affects Santa Rosa County. I know there's been a lot of conversation about testing and the ability to test in Florida and specifically in Santa Rosa County, so I wanted to update you on that. I have given each of you a handout in front of you and Commissioner Cole and Commissioner Salter, I believe that was emailed to you just before the meeting started. So really wanted to put it in the context for you. So we, you know, right now, there is no drive-through testing or pull-up testing in Santa Rosa County. We met with Sacred Heart yesterday, who is running the one in Escambia County. And basically, they're seeing thirty percent of their numbers are Santa Rosa County residents. So if you combine the Escambia County population and Santa Rosa County population together and divide it out, we come up to about thirty-seven point six-two percent of that population. So based on their numbers of screening, you know, they feel like they are meeting the need in Santa Rosa County. No matter what you hear in the news, no matter the press conferences you hear, there is limited ability to test people in the country. And that is true in Florida as well. We have the ability to test 625,000 right now with the collection kits that are available statewide. And we have a population of twenty-one million four-hundred-eighty-ish thousand people. So we're still very selective as to who's getting the test. So you still have to go through the screening process, and you still have to meet the criteria to be screened for COVID-19. We also have discussion with Baptist, and they have some strategies that we're hoping to see something in the next few days to increase the testing. The hospitals are testing cases, but they're only testing cases that are admitted to the hospital. So if you have a health condition that requires you to be admitted and you have these signs and symptoms, then you're getting a COVID-19 test. So I guess reaffirming with the public that if you're not symptomatic and you don't have signs and symptoms, you're just not going to get a test right now, nor is there a reason for that. Still, the majority of people who are being tested are not required, requiring hospitalization. You know, worst case scenario planning, which is one thing that we do in emergency management, does call for an uptick in that, and that's why we're gearing up for some future strategies for hospitalization. So and that's why the CEO sent the letter, you know, last week about the concerns for the health care rise. But if you kind of follow that list, I included Santa Rosa, Escambia, and Ocaloosa. Then I looked at some other counties throughout the state. So basically, you can see the total amount of tests that have been done, obviously Broward and Miami. Those are the two counties with really the outbreak severity in Florida. And it correlates to their population as well. I mean, that's what you're seeing in New York. And New York is one of the heaviest populated, density populated areas in our country. And thus, you can see that the spike in the pandemic is in New York. So, you know, we've had one hundred and eleven tests total. We have eight positive as of this morning, one hundred and three negative, and there's still three that are out there pending. So we have a testing positive rate of seven point four percent. If you look at the statewide, out of all the twenty-three thousand seven hundred twenty-three that were tested that met the criteria to be tested, only eight point nine percent were testing positive for COVID. So there are a lot of other respiratory illnesses out there that are concerning. And we've seen this trending all this flu season. Influenza A is still one of the most prevalent strains of influenza that is out there. And we also have RSV and some of the other ones that are popping up as well. So understanding that it's still a small percentage of people are testing positive for COVID, even though there are still a lot of respiratory problems going on out there. And then I just want to tie it in that, you know, you compare it to the population, and the right-hand column there shows the percentage of population being tested. And you can see even though that we don't have a testing site in Santa Rosa County right now, that we are still in a very similar number of Escambia population being tested. So we're communicating this with the hospitals, and there is, you know, a strategy within the health care community. And I just really want to get across to the citizens that is if you're not symptomatic, you're just not going to get a test. So the other thing that I want to update you on is personal protective equipment. And we are definitely in a shortage. And we are, in Santa Rosa County, we stood up a county staging area, which is at my facility. And we're managing the PPE for the health care facilities and the first responders. So we have got, received an allocation from the state, I would say about a fifth of what we ordered from the state. And we are managing that. We've kind of put some priorities on, in our health care system, that we're managing those and distributing those. And CDC has also given a lot of guidance, and we've pushed that out to our health care facilities, pushed that out to our responders about conservation of PPE. We've also recently, this Monday, we altered our fire department response. Their primary role is fire protection, and we want to assure that we have enough firemen to put out the structured fires, the car fires, run the wrecks and all. So we have decreased their response to medical calls. They were only going to the Delta and Echo calls, which are really the higher priority and life-threatening. We have proven that our screening for the 911 callers has worked. Our last two positive cases were transported by EMS, and they met the criteria in our screening. And our EMS crews were fully PPE'd up when they went into that residence. So we feel like the steps we're taking are working in our county. We continue to push out the need to, you know, maintain your social distancing, follow your, the CDC's recommendation of that. And, you know, we're too early in the testing process to understand the curve yet. Right now, the health department turnaround is three to four days. The outsourcing through Sacred and those are looking like, you know, anywhere from five to seven days to get the turnaround. So what happened yesterday, we really won't know about until the first of next week. So I just caution people to be very leery in anything they see out there. We're pushing out factual information on our side, and we continue to encourage people to do that. The last thing I want to update you on is the school board has a feeding strategy to make sure that the kids who are in need out there are getting food. And we have started having discussion with all our feeding partners. And there is a concern that if this continues on, there will be a vulnerable population that's not able to get food. We verified with the state that the supply chain is intact. They are struggling to keep some on the shelves due to, I mean, what we call in our world the hoarding. But I think we'll see that slow down hopefully. And then all our big markets, Walmarts, Targets, Publix, and all them are hiring additional people to be able to get their supply on the shelf in a more timely manner. But we are concerned that there's a vulnerable population as we will probably see, you know, unemployment increase and all. So we're working with the school board to come up with a strategy to allow those families to be fed, not only with the kids. So their program is based on USDA numbers, and there's a lot of guidance I won't bore you with. But they've worked their strategy, so it's working. You know, I think they'll probably deliver 6,000 meals out today. And there's some nonprofits that are working with them to get the families fed for the week. But we're starting to see that they may need some assistance. So we're working that strategy, and we'll continue to roll that out and take whatever action we can to support the structure that is already there and support our nonprofits that are doing a great job helping our vulnerable population out. So I think that's the last of my updates unless you have a question.
Thank you, Brad. As we move through this, if there's anything that I or any of the other commissioners can assist you with, just let us know. Be glad to help as we can. Any questions for Brad?
Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Salter?
Thank you. I just want to commend Brad and the entire county staff. I've been working with them basically on a daily basis, and they're doing a great job, especially with something that we've never dealt with before. It's like an invisible enemy. Things are changing every day, and Brad, entire county staff's right on top of it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Now, we're going to our COVID-19 orders, discussion and review of our local state of emergency and initial EPM declarations. Dan?
Yes, sir. Chairman Salter signed the local state of emergency last week. There is a clause in that local state of emergency that it automatically renews for additional seven-day periods. And I just wanted to point that out to the board and the public that our local state of emergency, although the board will take no specific action today, that that continues in place. The second attachment there that was included in the backup is the emergency protective measure declaration that I signed last Friday, which closed our beaches to the public, really closed our beaches. And then that order also included a restaurant order, but that was superseded by the governor's executive order later that same day. And just looking for board ratification of that emergency protective measure order that I signed last Friday.
Thank you, Dan, and thank you for all the work that you've done putting that together. Any questions on the local state of emergency order or the emergency protective measures?
Just a comment. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just a comment. I was out at the beach this morning to check on the deputies, figured since I was coming to the meeting, see if they needed anything. And they are thankful for the order. It's helping them maintain things. A great majority of the folks are understanding and helping take care of those deputies that are out there 24/7. So they are being well supplied and well taken care of, and they really appreciate everyone's cooperation and understanding as we go through this. So I just wanted to tell them I'd pass that on to the fellow commissioners this morning.
Thanks for bringing that to us.
Sir, if I could, just because we're...
Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My concern is, you know, we've closed down a lot of gymnasiums and different venues like that, as should be done. But we're getting emails from the wedding venues, fifty, seventy-five people that still want to have their wedding. And I understand, you know, my heart goes out to them. This is something they planned. It's probably one of the biggest moments in any two people's lives. But how do we continue to avoid that situation? I mean, you know, we can't do anything at this point. It's optional to the folks that want to do this. But if we're going to close down gyms, if we're going to close down other venues where there's multiples of people, should we consider, or has there been consideration for venues such as this?
Just to clarify, we have not closed down gyms. That's part of the governor's order. The governor has issued those mandatory closures. The county has not. And wedding licenses are not being issued at the present time. The clerk's office is not issuing wedding licenses at the current time, so terms of...
And the governor's latest order indicates that he was seeking a public advisory that would limit all meetings, even in private venues, to ten people or less. So that would implicate those larger gatherings as far as our ability to regulate that. As far as our ability to regulate that, we really don't have that ability at this point. But the governor has indicated that the public health advisory would limit those.
Thank you, Roy. So Commissioner Cole, looks like the governor's...
I'm sorry. I just thought we ought to get that out there because it has been questioned. And I think, you know, letting the governor control that, of course, is the best thing to do. But since we got the question, I wanted to get it out that it's not advisable.
That's absolutely, good thing you brought that up. Personal responsibility is a huge component of public safety at this point.
Commissioner...
Commissioner Parker?
Just two questions. I've talked with the county administrator about these via telephone earlier this week, but I thought in light of Commissioner Cole's reference, I know I've gotten several questions, and I think maybe with Brad here, maybe even weigh in more, the board. But the two questions, one is, I don't know how monitoring is going, I guess, as an update for the county parks. I mean, I know I have no problem saying I voiced to the county administrator when we first closed the beach, that's our biggest park in the county. But we've still got some activity on playgrounds. I don't know, I think I read in the order that we would continue to monitor that, and if it was a problem, we would close it. So I don't know how that's going. And the second question, which is really, I guess, more for if maybe just Brad could help share to the citizens why this may would fall and the governor would do this, is I know I understand that, I think Mr. Rozdick said they technically made the decision at the local level to call, close schools. But I heard in one of the governor's press conferences where he said, "We close schools." And I don't think there's a single public school thing tied there. So it may be one of those where you close, or we're going to cut some funding type, you know, request. But why they haven't closed daycares? I mean, I can tell you, I drove by a daycare as recently as two days ago, and there's still large groups of kids congregating and playing together. And I know Dan had mentioned, maybe it was because we obviously have a workforce that needs childcare. But I could argue that folks with K-4 or K-5 kids like myself, or first grade, we're not going to leave our kids at home either. So I'm just wondering, why do you think that determination? Or is that something where, you know, at a local level, we would maybe make a suggestion in how I ask you, or there's a valid reason? I at least would like to get that. I do know I've had several people email and call with that. And so I can't answer it. I've told them I don't understand why.
Yeah, we've had that discussion on the state conference calls as well, and the governor has not pursued that avenue as well. I can't give you a definite answer. I mean, I can tell you that if you look across the board at the COVID-19 cases, they are not in that demographic. I mean, we do have a two-year-old with that as one of our positive cases. But across the geographics of the United States, you're not seeing a large number of small kids at all. So, but other than that, it, they, you know, we have, we have people in our office that have small kids that are still going to daycare as well. I mean, they are taking additional cleaning precautions and whatnot. But as far as from giving you a good answer of why, I don't know. It has come up repeatedly on state conference calls, but that's just not a direction the governor has taken.
Yeah, I don't know if the youngsters may not be as affected as much as they could still transmit it or whatever. I mean, I know we're affected, obviously. We have two kids in the school system right now that now they're going to the online thing at home. Those are my only things. And then have we, and I guess back to the first question, have we seen where folks are following guidelines at our county parks? I mean, I know we've all received some emails of people saying, "Hey, why don't we close county parks if we close the beaches?" But is anybody monitoring that, Dan?
I think our facility staff, is they're maintaining the parks or keeping an eye on that? We've closed all of the restroom facilities at all of our parks, and we are encouraging people to use the passive aspects of our park, to walk outside, to jog, to bicycle, but to try and avoid playground equipment. We cannot keep that clean with the staff that we have and take some personal responsibility. And if you decide you want to go to the park, that you need to prepare appropriately for that. I don't have hard numbers on usage. We've never tracked that in the county. I think since we've closed the facilities, the restroom facilities, we've seen a decrease. We still see people using Spencer Field to walk around the track there, and people using those passive areas like at the Santa Rosa Sportsplex and Tiger Point and Navarre Sports Complexes. So I think there's a difference between the parks and the beaches. The beach is an amenity that would draw people from around the area. And with all the beaches along the Gulf Coast from Alabama to Panama City closed, we would not want to draw people to our beach. The parks are not going to draw people from outside of Santa Rosa County. They're there in an amenity for our residents to enjoy responsibly in this pandemic.
I just want to thank both you gentlemen for those responses. And that way, if we continue to receive those same questions, we could just point them back to this video, and that way they get here firsthand. Thank you.
I would add, before the board takes action on that declaration, just from the public input side of this, we've established that public input form. Prior to the order on Friday, we received 10 public input forms to close the beaches and one about closing restaurants. Subsequent two, we've received seven public input forms in the last 18 hours or so since we closed and published the public input forms. We've received seven from residents who desire to have the beach back open. So I just wanted to make sure that those, I can read them all into the record, but they are published, and we will republish the ones that we received today. But that's the only way I know right now to get that public input out there is just from a number of forms that we've received.
Thank you, Dan. At this time, I would move that we ratify the local state of emergency declaration as well as the emergency protective measures. Without objection. Hearing none. That is approved. Next is declaration of additional emergency protective measures, specifically in order to implement and comply with Executive Order 20-69 to enable BOCC meetings without a physical quorum and suspension of solicitation throughout Santa Rosa County.
Yes, sir. The governor signed Executive Order 2069, which allows public meetings to occur via communications media, via teleconference or video teleconference, without a physical quorum present. In order to do that, today, we have a physical quorum, and we're using the communications media. But if this progresses or we reach a point where we would need to meet just telephonically or video conference-wise, an additional order locally is required to support that. And that's what Roy has drafted and is included in the backup. And one that is not included in that order but could be added, and this is for board discussion and decision, would be solicitation. I've directed the clerk's office to not accept any new permit applications for solicitors, but we do have active permits out there. So I recommend suspension of those solicitation permits and to prohibit door-to-door solicitation in this time.
Thank you, Dan. And that was, I brought the solicitation up after I spoke with someone who was walking around in my neighborhood last weekend. While we're under a state of emergency, I don't think solicitation, door-to-door solicitation is appropriate in Santa Rosa County. So I would ask the board to include that in the declaration. Any questions or comments on this?
I have such an order being drafted now, and we'll have it for your signature as we finish the meeting.
Thank you, Roy. All right, then I will move approval of this item without objection. Hearing none. That is approved. Now we'll move on to county news and updates. Want to give a shout out to Brandy. She's been doing a good job keeping us and everyone else apprised of what's going on, both locally and around the state. Citizens are encouraged to sign up for county news and updates. The link is on the web at sanarosa FL.gov. You can sign up for county news and our daily emergency management updates as well. Dan, do you have anything to add under this?
I think just we've forged some additional partnerships with the school district, with outdoor advertising, with digital boards, where we're working with them to communicate the county message and to point people to the website for the latest information. So I think, you know, in this time, we've established some great relationships that will continue to bear fruit even beyond this time, where we're able to communicate via all kinds of media.
Thank you. Now we'll move into public forum. Roy, how are we going to, any public forum that's just going to be present?
Anything present? We have in, we're putting in place the ability to have input from the public if we go forward with a meeting based upon, in the future, based upon this executive order or emergency order. But we really, we do have staff members that are online at this point, but we don't have it open to the public yet.
Okay. Any questions or comments from any of the public in the audience today? All right. And we do have in our agenda, the public input that was provided earlier via email. And so the commissioners have had a chance to review that as we move through these items.
Yes, sir. I think the only one I would highlight would be that we received public input on four forums for land development code. That's not for discussion or anything we're considering. I think Commissioner Cole added that. We'll talk about that later. But all of those input forms have been forwarded to Planning and Zoning for their incorporation. We've delayed the Land Development Code public meeting that was scheduled a week ago, which will delay the Board of County Commissioners special meeting, which was scheduled the middle of April. So all of that is being pushed down the road. We've received those inputs and forwarded them to Sean and his staff as they get ready for those public meetings when we do have them. But we're not going ahead and pushing through the Land Development Code. We're still going to have those public forums. They've just been delayed. The other public input forums we received, there were three. One is not related to an agenda item. So that was from Mr. Mike Stanley. It's included in the backup. It's regarding an MSBU for Bay Ridge Park in Auburn, Rogers and Penn State in Gulf Breeze. That's been provided to all the commissioners. If there's guidance that the board would like to provide to staff as we go forward, if we want to include that on a future agenda, that's something that I'm just looking for, not necessarily today, but over the next two weeks as we're preparing for another meeting, if that's something we want to take up at this point in time. I know there is a time factor with MSBU's and getting the tentative rates established in May. So I don't think we need to take anything up today or read this into the record necessarily. It's available to you. It's available to the public, and we'll take guidance on how we handle that going forward.
Thank you, Dan. Now we'll move into our Economic and Tourist Development Committee. Item number one is discussion and approval of the Navarre Beach Independence Day fireworks display and funding in the amount of $14,775. The purchase of the fireworks display was budgeted for in the FY 2019-2020 tourist development budget. This is an annual event. Commissioner Peach?
Just a quick comment. There was approval of the TDC to also fund a barge to bring the fireworks out onto the water. Julie and her staff tried. There are no barges available this year. So we'll proceed as we did last year. But the TDC plans to request and budget for adding a barge next year in order, you know, to provide better safety and things like that. So I just wanted to update it because we did discuss that when we first brought this up. So we tried, no barges available for the fireworks this year.
Thank you, Mr. Peach. Any other questions or comments?
We did receive a public input form from Ms. Maggie Roberts on this. That's been forwarded to Julie. Julie is on the video conference if you wanted her to address any questions or concerns with this.
Any questions or concerns for Julie? All right, I will move approval without objection. Hearing none, that is approved. Item number two, discussion and approval of the Santa Rosa County Tourist Development Tax Capital Projects Funding Score Sheet. Any questions or comments? If not, I'll move approval of that without objection. Hearing none, that is approved. Item three, discussion and approval of the purchase of a 2020 Ford F-150 truck for $29,533 for use by the newly approved beach manager position in the tourist development office. Questions or comments? This is a new position, so we're going to be backfilling that with a vehicle for the designated purposes in the agenda. Move approval of that without objection. Hearing none, that is approved. Item four, Strive Grant, COVID-19 Economic Hardship Grant. Discussion and approval of the following. We had two Strive Grant applications for facade improvements. And the second item is reallocating the remaining funding from the 2020 Strive cycle for COVID-19 economic hardship grants for small businesses in the amount of $2,500 and allocating an additional $60,000 from the economic development portion of the electric franchise fee for an economic hardship grant program with a total funding level of $100,000. Good morning, Shannon. Why don't you come on up and let us know what the plans are?
Good morning. This is a quick reminder for the Strive Grant. It was approved last year to add into the budget. And so the two that's in the agenda backup are the ones that they, we've spoke with them. They want to move forward with their allocation for improvements at their location. As is stated in the backup and as you just mentioned, we would like to reallocate the remaining $40,000 within the Strive Grant and reallocate $60,000 from the franchise fee to assist small businesses within Santa Rosa County, up to $2,500. This would help restaurants. This would help florists. This would help venues that Commissioner Cole mentioned on the phone that are seeing a decrease in business. This would be in partnership with the SBDC. We have spoken numerous times, just in this past week, with Kaylee Massey, with the Small Business Development Center. They would be in partnership and toe with us every step of the way to help allocate this money out to the companies that are needing this, to the businesses that are needing this in Santa Rosa County that has less than 20 employees, that has seen a reduction of 25% or more in their business since this pandemic has started.
Thank you, Shannon. Commissioner Peach?
Just, I wanted to bring up to the fellow commissioners, because I chatted with Shannon this morning on this. I think this is great. One thing I asked them to look at, we have some food trucks or internet vendors, you know, that some way may to include them if they're a licensed vendor or something, they were going to look at that. And then just to clarify that this will be evaluated and granted through the SBDC, the Small Business Development Council. So they are the experts at determining business needs and that, and this is not going to be determined by us or Shannon's office in a vacuum. It's going to be out there for SBDC. And I applaud Shannon and the staff's efforts for working through all those weaknesses.
Thank you, Mr. Peach. And I've spoken with Shannon and Erica about this program, and I want to make sure that we direct our local businesses and encourage people to reach out to the SBDC as we move forward, because there are going to be resources available in short order, hopefully, from the SBA, that people are going to need some assistance navigating. The SBDC is in place to accomplish that. And whatever support, Shannon, that we can give you and the SBDC, let us know. A lot of small businesses are going to be struggling, and we need to support them in any way that we can.
And I would also ask that anyone who's listening, anyone in the room, encourage them to go to sanarosaready.com. Please continue to push that out. It's important that all our businesses in the county completes these surveys to, so that it can be passed along to the state to let them know what the actual damage assessments are, so that if more money is needed for the bridge loans beyond that $50 million, that more money can be allocated toward this. So it is very important that these surveys completed by all our businesses.
Good point. All right, any other discussion? If not, I'll move approval without objection.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The two that got the Strive Grant right now, Mike's Garden and Sports and Wheat CPAs, I realize that, you know, they went through the effort and received those grants, but I'd just like to throw it out there that perhaps right now, since these two are for aesthetics, that we perhaps claw back that $10,000, make it available to them after the recovery, and use that $10,000 to help for businesses that are struggling rather than use it for aesthetics at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cole. And I... Thank you, Commissioner Cole. And I appreciate the viewpoint. And I would, I would rather see us move forward with that because they've gone through this process. They're the ones that have already been approved. They're going to be investing that money in our local community with contractors who are going to come in and do the work. So I would, I would rather see it continue for these and then thus allocate the remainder towards the COVID-19 economic hardship grants. Any other questions or comments? So I will move approval of this item without objection. Hearing on that is approved. Next, we'll move into the Administrative Committee. Item number one, discussion and approval of a memorandum of agreement with Holly Navar Water System and the City of Gulf Breeze to support the Northwest Florida Regional Reuse and Water Quality Improvements Strategic Plan. It's a mouthful to say, but it's an absolute huge deal for Santa Rosa County and Santa Rosa Sound and Navar Beach. Dan, I know you've done a tremendous amount of work on this over the past several months, working with Holly Navar Water System and the City of Gulf Breeze. Do you want to hit the high points for us?
Yes, sir. This started out last, last fall as just a two-party agreement with Holly Navar Water System. Since then, the City of Gulf Breeze has joined with the water management, Northwest Florida Water Management District is involved now in this program by which we're going to improve water quality. We're going to provide that regional ribs solution for disposal at Eglin and expand regional reuse. And so all parties have agreed. We did receive a public input form from Mr. Dunaway, the attorney for Holly Navar Water System, seeking the board's support of this. This will be transformational for the south end of the county as far as wastewater disposal and reclaimed water reuse over the next five to eight years as these projects are executed. And it's, I think it's fantastic that we have all parties agreeing this. Once this is approved, it will go to the City of Gulf Breeze for their approval. Once that is complete, Holly Navar will move on with Phase One of the project, which is the line from their plant to Eglin. And then the subsequent phases will follow. There are four phases to this. Funding from various sources, including the state, and restore funding as well as local funding.
So another step towards getting the disposal of the effluent redirected from the Sound to the ribs up at Eglin. Commissioner Salter and Commissioner Cole, I know y'all have been working on this for 15 years plus. So it's good to see it coming to, coming to fruition. Any questions or comments on this? If not, I will move approval without objection. Hearing on that is approved. Item two, just a little housekeeping, really, discussion and approval of funding the Godwin Connector Project with Area Three Transportation Impact Fee Funds by its previously appropriated sources. So this is changing the source of the funding for that project. I do want to say that it's coming along really nice. It looks good. A lot of people are excited about seeing the finished project, our product. Any questions or comments? If not, I'll move approval without objection. Hearing on that is approved. Item three, discussion and approval to engage the Chrisner Group for attorney services. Dan?
Janil is here to talk to the specifics, but this is approval from the board for us to engage this group to look at some of our pay practices, our Federal Labor Standards Act, classifications, time sheets, things like that. This is part of, I'll be a little bit of a corollary part of our overall compensation adjustment. This is something that we need to look at. If the board approves today, we will also extend the option for the constitutional officers to participate in this review. I think it will, will help us be better postured as an organization going forward to complete this review. The total cost is $54.95 for the service.
Any questions or comments? If not, I'll move approval without objection. Hearing on that is approved. Item four, discussion and approval to declare the following as surplus property. Items from the Santa Rosa County Code Enforcement Office and out-of-date electronic equipment from the Santa Rosa Clerk of Courts. Any questions or comments? Not on move approval without objection. Hearing on that is approved. Item five, discussion and approval of the following event requests. A Hope for Santa Rosa County's request to utilize Baghdad Mill Site Park for their annual A New Leash on Love event scheduled for November 14th, 2020 from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Cole, they're putting the Baghdad Mill Site Park to good use. If not, I will move approval of that without objection.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman. That's fine. It's been working out real well for them.
Thank you, Commissioner Cole. I'll move approval of that without objection. Hearing on that is approved. Item six, discussion and approval of the contribution agreement and restrictive easement for 609.72 acres on property adjacent to OLFX and approval to execute all necessary documents. This is a restrictive easement around the new OLFX. I know we have received public comment from Randy Roy, the liaison with Whiting Field, supporting this effort. Any questions or comments? Roy, did you have anything?
Well, this is the first part of the protection of the new OLFX. We anticipate a continued transaction with the same folks for some 2,700 more acres that would be coming up. The Navy has the funding for that. We did have a $59.80 issue in regard to whether the contribution agreement was going to pay exactly 20, 75%. So we made an executive decision to pay that $59.
We'll add that on here for approval if we need to. Thank you, Roy. Any questions or comments? If not, I will move approval without objection. Hearing on that is approved. Item seven, discussion and approval of certificate of participation for the FY 19 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program in the amount of $48,626 and designation of Marcia Arnold of the Sheriff's Office as point of contact. Any questions, comments? I will move approval of this without objection. Hearing on that is approved. Item eight, discussion and approval of requests from the Sheriff's Office to use the Law Enforcement Trust Fund in the amount of $25,000 in support of the crime prevention program at the request of Santa Rosa County Crime Stoppers. We had Crime Stoppers in here at our last meeting. They are doing good work, and this will further their efforts to cut down crime in our community. Any questions or comments? If not, I'll move approval of this without objection. Hearing on that is approved. Item nine, discussion and approval to appoint David Phillips as the District Two representative to the local Restore Council. This is appointed by Commissioner Cole. Any questions or comments? If not, I will move approval of this without objection. Hearing on that is approved. Item 10, discussion and approval of FWC Agreement Number 19020 in the amount of $99,841, providing supplemental NERDA funding to deploy additional artificial reef modules within designated permitted areas. The reef projects that are funded through NERDA have been great down in the south end of the county and really throughout the Panhandle. So glad to see that they're continuing to support those efforts. I'll move approval of this without objection. Hearing on that is approved. Item 11, discussion and approval of amendment to Agreement Number R1902, which updates the scope of work and award amount to reflect the reduction of tasks and deliverables. This is for the Resilient Program Grant. Any questions, comments? Dan?
No, this, just to clarify, this is at the request of the grantor at the state to reduce the tasks and deliverables this fiscal year and move them into next fiscal year. We would expect the project will still, and all those deliveries would still be completed. It's just a reallocation of funding for the state in their fiscal year.
Thank you. I will move approval without objection. Hearing on that is approved. Item 12, discussion and approval of submission of application through the Florida Boating Improvement Program for design and permitting services necessary to replace the ramp at Woodlawn Beach Boat Ramp. I know Sheila is working on this. Any questions or comments? If not, I'll move approval without objection. Hearing on that is approved. Item 13, discussion and approval of a pre-proposal through the FY 2020 National Fish and Wildlife Foundation National Coastal Resilience Funding Opportunity, requesting planning assistance funding for the development of a living shoreline suitability model, potentially in partnership with the Pensacola and Perdido Bay Estuary Program. Any questions or comments on this? Dan? Okay. I will move approval without objection. Hearing on that is approved. Item 14 is an add-on by Commissioner Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'd like to reverse the two and talk about the letter we received from the Home Builders Association, David Peaton. And I wanted to just voice, and I think we need to give staff direction. I'm going to paraphrase the letter basically that if the county has given the ability through the governor to allow home construction to continue as an essential business, that we recognize that and allow that to continue. I, for one, feel like that would be something we should do, try to keep the economy bolstered. We all know how many people work in that industry. But I'd like to add to that that all construction, not just home building, but if somebody's clearing land, if somebody's doing site preparation, doing underground work, you know, any construction, I feel like if the governor gives us that leeway in being able to deem whether or not it continues, that we allow that. Because I think we all know that, you know, if you're out on a bulldozer or digging a ditch or, you know, building a parking lot, you know, you're, you're not confined and you're out, you know, with a minimal amount of people around you. It's not like people congregating together. So I'd just like to ask the board's opinion of that so we can give staff direction if that, if that comes and we're days away from a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cole. Any questions or comments from other members of the board?
I would just add, we
Commissioner Salter?
I agree with Commissioner Cole. I read the same letter. At this time, the county has no interest in shutting down per se. I think we should continue to follow the governor's order. But in case he does choose to start shutting down counties, that we do include the Home Builders Association and other construction activities as essential businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Salter. Dan?
I would just add, sir, that staff has received several of these types of requests from, from various industries. We've reviewed the orders that are in place in Leon County and Orange County and Broward County, those counties where they, and Alachua County, where they've done shelter in place or closed non-essential businesses. We're reviewing all of those. And before there would be any reaction, that would be something that this board would consider. In all of those, the construction industry is included as an essential business along with a long list of other items. So we are not drafting or considering or recommending any, anything like that at this point in time, but we're monitoring around the state. The Florida Association of Counties has a great one-stop resource of all the orders that have been passed by the various counties around the state. And so I think I understand the board's direction on this. And if, if we got to that point, we'll make sure that the, the essential businesses list includes construction.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Commissioner Cole, Commissioner Salter, for your input on that. I think staff, they, has, has appropriate direction on that at this point. Now, Commissioner Cole, you also had another item?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, Commissioner Salter, for your support on that. I think it's just, you know, the way we need to, not knowing when we'll have the next meeting or if, how it's going to take place. I just wanted to get that out there. My next item, and I prepared a description here so I don't have to ad-libs, basically in response to the efforts to not just curtail the spread of this infection, but also continue to serve our citizens and bolster a crippled economy, I propose that we suspend upcoming LDC meetings and changes for six months. This would take all that pressure off of staff that's already got quite a bit on their shoulders, not to, you know, certainly as was said earlier, Sean can continue to the development. But I feel like Dan and Mark, Roy need to know that that's down the roadways. And also, I'd like to see us place a six-month moratorium on the beginning date of school impact fees and a discussion of the county impact fees. Postpone that also. Our citizens, as well as our fellow countrymen, are all suffering and concerned with everyday survival. Our federal government has lowered interest rates and has indicated a relief check for everyone. I've spoken to our tax collector as a possibility of extending the property tax deadline. Fortunately, over 98% have been collected. So really, that would be effective in aiding citizens in having a little extra money in their pocket right now. Therefore, this moratorium, this moratorium is the most direct way we can help people working in this industry to continue to bolster the local economy. I've already heard that, you know, sales are down. Of course, people aren't visiting open houses. So, you know, I don't think putting a six-month out on this is really going to hurt the school board. It's not suspending it. It's just backdating it six months. Because if home sales fall off, it's going to be irrelevant anyway. But try to get those homes sold, the ones that are already on the market. Let's not put that extra pressure on that industry. We have the benefit of already not collecting. So it wouldn't be a stalemate of any type of refunds or anything. I feel this would be beneficial to the morale of thousands of people that work in this industry. And this action would not increase development in any way. It would just help keep it on track. So I'm looking to my fellow commissioners to support this and give staff that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cole. A suspension of the pending impact fee is not something I would be willing to take up as an add-on because it was such a contentious issue, and it took a long time to go through public hearings and input meetings to, to get done. We have another month, is that right, before it would?
May 4th is the start of collection for the Educational Facilities Impact Fee.
May 4th is, so we've got another, at least another meeting, maybe two meetings between now and then. If that's something that we're going to consider, we could do so at, at one of those meetings. But I would certainly want to solicit input from the superintendent and the school board before we took any action in that.
If we're going to amend the ordinance, we'd have to, which we would have to do since the effective date is part of the ordinance, we'd have to advertise for a public hearing and have a public hearing on that amendment.
Thank you, Roy. Any other comments? Commissioner Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just say, I had a phone call about this from, actually, an engineer last night that had asked about entertaining the suspension. I told them something very similar to what you just said is, I think we can all say over the last two weeks, we have seen how quickly evolving this is. We didn't know several weeks ago that we would be closing beaches and closing restaurants. We don't know where we'll be, you know, by this April 15th deadline. I've heard a lot of rumors where people have said they don't anticipate schools to open back up the rest of the year, even though they say April 15th. Few comments on that. First, I want to say thank you, Commissioner Cole, for, for bringing it up. I think it's, it's very noble to try to do everything we can for the economy. But I will also echo Commissioners Lynch's comments. I said, you know, I think something this big and impactful and the amount of money that's been spent to get there by the school board and superintendent, I think it would be worth saying that, hey, look, I'm okay with reviewing it and seeing where we're at, kind of like we're doing with parks and the governor's doing everything else, and see where we're at. We have two meetings scheduled prior to that. I think it would be worth adding on an agenda, having that conversation, having the superintendent and the school board involved. And plus, that will give us a couple more weeks to see where we're at. You know, I'm, I'm hopeful. I know the president got on the news Tuesday and talked about having folks back to work by Easter, and the stock market went up. You know, having folks back to work by Easter, and the stock market went up, you know, since the first of the week. So I think it's worth the conversation, but I think it, I would be more comfortable to take some time. You know, right now, we're, they're not, they're not being collected, so we still have some time before that. With Roy's sentiment, you're saying to be able to take the action that Commissioner Cole's requested, we would have to advertise a public hearing about that prior to?
To amend the ordinance, yes, sir.
And what, is that a 30-day advertisement?
It doesn't, it, well, if we could have on the next agenda, the advertising, the ability to advertise, and we could generally get it on the agenda for the subsequent meeting.
Okay, so we have time until the next meeting, then, to kind of see where we're at and how things have shook out?
That's correct.
Yeah, I would feel more comfortable, I mean, right now, we're not collecting them, at least having a couple weeks to look and see where this is at with the economy. And at that point, I think I would be able to make a much better decision on, hey, where we're at. I mean, quite frankly, there are a lot of small businesses and a lot of employees that are hurting very bad in our community, and there's also some that are making hay in our community. And I think that's an accurate statement, and I would want to have a little time, and I definitely would want to have the school board members and the superintendent the ability to at least be able to be here and comment on that.
Commissioner Peach?
Mr. Chairman?
Let me go to Commissioner Peach, Commissioner Cole, and then I'll come right back to you.
I think we need to look at holistically everything we could do for small businesses as well. I mean, I think this could be on the table with other avenues. I think we saw Shannon and Erica come up with this strive grant, because, yeah, the small businesses and all them are hurting, and I'd like to see the staff at least look at the holistic approach of options we have, you know, to include this, to help these small businesses once we get going. I mean, because we're going to have to spur the tourism and all that, and I think we're going to have a lot of, a lot of things on the table to consider, and I think, you know, this being one of them, you know, along with other possible avenues to spur it on. So, you know, I think we need to keep all options on the table, but agree, we need to look holistically.
Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and certainly wasn't looking for a vote today, but we had to get this into conversation because of the timeline with the, you know, having to advertise it. And I'm certainly not opposing the eventually collection of it. I see the need, and it's been passed, but I just strongly urge everybody to take a look at this, because of the size of the industry, how that $5,000 could curtail sales or hurt, you know, we know we're going to see inventory sitting on the shelves, and how do we get that sold? And once it goes past that May 1 deadline, that inventory is, you know, if it's already got inventory on the shelf, why build more of them? So that would curtail the growth. I just feel like it's a great incentive. We've already heard a lot of pushback about it. Certainly get Superintendent Rosnick's and the school board's input on it. I feel like, you know, it's just the right thing for us to do with everything the federal government's trying to do with small businesses, developments trying to do, that this is an effort we can put in place. And it also includes, you know, holding off on ours right now. You know, we've got the information now on the amounts that the county should look at through that rational nexus, but, you know, those are things that we need to stay off right now and get through this crisis time, get everybody back on their feet, and then, you know, get to county. You know, we've been here before. We've been here through Ivan, we've been here through the depression, you know, Santa Rosa County is a resilient county, we've got great leadership up there, but whatever we can do as a board of commissioners to help bolster that, I feel is important, and looking forward to further discussion and having it on that agenda. I appreciate the support, and I agree with Commissioner Peach. All avenues, any avenue we can create to keep our people moving forward in this time, I'm all for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cole. Appreciate you bringing that up. Any other?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Parker?
Thank you. Just two quick things I didn't cover under extreme of consciousness before. I do want to say, because it was sort of a two-part comment that Commissioner Cole had, strongly support just going ahead and giving staff direction on, I guess you'd say, hitting the pause button, on LDC. We can't have the public meetings. Clearly, I know those have been canceled. There's, I mean, quite frankly, I would say that at the moment, you know, it's hard to say, well, let's just push everything back 30 days, and we, again, we don't know where we're going to be in two weeks, the way that this will spiral and what state leadership would do. So I don't know if it's, needs to be six months or at least 90 days that we postpone, but I would support him on that. And then, I think out of this, as Commissioner Cole said, he wasn't looking for a vote today, but just the conversation, and then with what Commissioner Peach said, I would support if we wanted to have a decision that we said today, just to notify folks that, hey, at our next set of meetings in April, that we want to have an agenda item where at that time, we can look for staff as well as commissioners, and that would give us time to have input. Really, an agenda item just says, look at what economic measures our county can do to help with our local economy. And by then, hopefully, we'll know, hopefully, this $2 million, you know, stimulus bill that the Senate passed will be enacted, or, you know, we might have something else, and we'll be able to know. Does that mean that, hey, we don't collect impact fees? Does that mean that, you know, quite frankly, I'm probably not the only commissioner that's talked with the county administrator that says, this is the middle of budget planning time for us, and we probably need to be looking at, you know, I'm sure sales tax is down with visitors not coming. I'm sure, you know, we're going to be looking at decreased revenue. We might even see, and again, it's too early to tell, property values going down. Of course, we've had new inventory and other things, but I'd be comfortable with that, you know, just notifying folks, hey, we're going to be looking at that next month, and that a way, we can explore all those options. So I'm not saying in any way I'm opposed to it, but I just think that we'll be able to tell more as this, I mean, Laura, we just, we're still under the first two weeks of this executive order, right? So, I mean, it's pretty fast-evolving.
Everything is changing lately. Commissioner Salter?
I agree with what everything, what everything has been said. I probably agree more with Commissioner Peach. Let's just slow down and look at everything. The LDC, I strongly support extending that to six months, and we'll look at everything else.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Okay, Jim. Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, well, thank you for the conversation from everybody, and definitely different times here, you know, fact of things, so, you know, before, you know, we all know sunshine law, we can't, you know, just go to each other's office and speak openly to each other in the hall or in the office. This even makes, this even makes it more interesting, so, and not just all these things being postponed for the benefit of the public, but also the benefit of our staff. We know how hard they're working on this new subject, so our ability to kind of table some of the old subjects, I think it is helpful to our staff and their well-being also.
Thank you, Commissioner Cole. I agree with you there. All right, so no action on that today, but we'll talk about an agenda item for the next meeting.
Yes, sir. Got it. In this new meeting format, just to test the public input form, we received a comment from Ms. Pavlik regarding extending the LDC, so I just would like to read that, because she's not here to speak, but she did take the time to submit this. Ms. Pavlik of 4454 Armitage Road in Gulf Breeze submitted, "Adding six more months to wait for the passage of the LDC. In six months, there won't be anything left to save. All trees will be gone, wetlands will be filled, and the next, and the next storm will flood all of us."
And we appreciate the public input, and I, I don't support a blanket statement of we're going to wait six months. I do think that we need to avoid embarking down new paths that are going to generate a lot of interest from the public. We need to stick to mission-critical items as much as we can, because people can't show up if we're following the guidelines promulgated by the CDC and the governor. So we don't want to discuss items, I don't want to discuss items that are going to generate a lot of public interest when we can't have the public here face-to-face to share their thoughts and input on those items. I mean, that's, that's how we work. That's how we work in the past. We, we like that public input. It's Florida, we're a sunshine state, we have to have that public input. So it's uncomfortable being here today with a largely empty room, and we've tried to limit this agenda to items that are routine in nature. So we're going to, we're going to bear that in mind as we move forward over the next few agendas to ensure that, again, everything we do is open and transparent, and we don't want to discuss items up here that are going to lead some in the public to say, we're trying to push things through or delay things that they would otherwise want to have input on. All right, so that concludes the administrative agenda. We will move to Commissioner Peach with the Services and Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's one item today for the Ship Affordable Housing Advisory Committee request. Discussion and approval of the following request. The appointment of the following individuals to the Ship Affordable Housing Advisory Committee: Kathy Lawson, Linda White, Michelle Williams, and Phyllis Gonzalez; and the reappointment of the remaining existing Ship Affordable Housing Advisory Committee members: Jerry Burden, Cindy Cotton, Michelle Tucker, Mike Majors, and Anna Weaver. If there's no discussion, I would recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, that is approved.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Peach. Next is Operations and Safety Committee, Commissioner Cole. Commissioner Cole, since you're on the phone, would you be okay with Commissioner Parker running through that?
That'd be fine. I'll just wait to the end for the add-on to have.
Okay, thank you. Think that might, might work a little better for the audio. Commissioner Parker?
Absolutely. I'd be glad to do this. Just want to check, make sure nobody needs a five-minute break before we start. Been going about an hour and 15 minutes. All good?
We want to, why don't we, why don't we take a five-minute break? We're about halfway through the agenda. We'll take five, and if you guys can just put your phones on hold, we'll be back at 10:25 and conclude the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and reconvene.
Yes, reconvene.
Commissioner Parker? Commissioner Park?
Thank you. All right, I'm going to take us to the Operations and Safety Committee. Item number one is discussion of approval to accept the... Item number one is discussion of approval to accept the Citizen Core Program grant agreement in the amount of $5,000. This is administered through Volunteer Florida and authorized county administrator to sign all related documents. There's a dollar-for-dollar match requirement, and I would recommend moving this or approving this without objection.
Hearing no comment, it's approved.
Item number two is discussion of approval of a one-year extension for fire ant control with Florida Pest at the current pricing. I'd recommend approving that without objection.
Hearing no comment, that's approved.
Item number three is discussion and approval of a one-year extension for general electric services, and this is with CND Electrical, Inc. at current pricing. Recommend approving that without objection.
Hearing none, that is approved.
Discussion and approval of request for Municipal Engineering Services Incorporated on behalf of South Santa Rosa Utilities for the open cutting of Circle Lane and West Avenue for water line upgrades. Recommend approving that without objection.
Hearing none, it's approved.
Discussion and approval of a request from John F. Rowell to install a 10-inch irrigation line across the Brownsville Loop Road by means of an open cut. Recommend approving that without objection.
Hearing none, that's approved.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Cole?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, both these items, have they been, has Furman give us a thumbs up on them?
He, he has. I've, I've spoken with Stephen about these, and Public Works had no objection to either.
Thank you.
Thank you. So hearing no objection, those are approved.
Item number six is discussion and approval of extending the traffic signal maintenance agreement for an additional year with Ingram Signalization, Inc. at current pricing. Recommend moving that, or approving that without objection.
Hearing none, that is approved.
Item number seven is discussion of approval of the final plat at Cambridge Park. This is 67 Lot Public Subdivision located in District Five. Recommend approving that without objection.
Hearing none, that's approved.
Discussion and approval of the paved road drainage and maintenance for Cambridge Park, same subdivision in District Five. Recommend approving that without objection.
Hearing none, that is approved.
Item nine is a discussion and approval of proposal from Atkins North America Incorporated for Shamukla Highway and Education Drive Signal Design in the amount of $33,608.40 and authorized the chairman to sign all related documents. Recommend approving that without objection.
Hearing none, that is approved.
Although with school being out, I will note there's probably not an immediate traffic solution, but hopefully school will be back next year and we can get that fixed over the summer, so. All right, item number 10 is a discussion and approval of change order number five in the amount of $15,160.56 from Utility Service Company for the Settlers Colony North Drainage Improvement HMGP project and request board chairman sign all related documents. Recommend approving that without objection.
Hearing none, that is approved.
Commissioner, I would like to, I would like to just pull item 11, the Pace Library Expansion and Construction Administration Services. The bids came in for that project when need to identify some funding, and so I don't want to execute this until we have identified the funding for the actual construction piece. So I'd just like to pull that from the agenda, please.
Okay. Any objection? So item 11 is pulled from the agenda. And item 12 was an add-on. Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item here, I really want to get some clarification on. It involves our airport and some hangars that are being built out there. It falls back on development orders, sinks, water heaters, restrooms, fire hydrants, and two buildings that are laying on the ground to try to be erected. I asked the IT staff to put those buildings pictures up for you so you could see them. These buildings have been laying on the ground over six months to a year. I want to find out who was responsible for not, this is our hangar, this is the hangar that we, as a board, approved last June. And also another one by the Milton Aviation Partners FBO. I want to find out who was responsible for not providing the correct site plan. Why did connecting, correcting it once the site plan was, and I may be calling wrong, I may be, you know, maybe it's a development order or whatever, but why did correcting it, the air take so long? If Mont McDonald should have accelerated this when a mistake was made and recognized, and Roger should have made sure that that was done. The bid was put out June 2019 and approved by this board. Nine months later, a development order was just issued two days ago. And that's because Roger agreed, the county agreed to provide the fire hydrant that wasn't on the original site plan, but is required because they're more than 400 feet. I understand now that the county will install the fire hydrant, but Mr. Blaylock, his own mortgage has not even priced it out yet, as of the other day. All this is on a hangar that the county is the owner of, and that should have been erected and already bringing in rental revenue to the airport fund. These hangars are being built with state grant. It is, it has a deadline. I talked to the contractor, and he don't believe now that he can meet that deadline. Our staff worked hard to receive this grant, and now it's in jeopardy of being lost, or at least more cost involved in time and manpower to extend the grant. Who pays for that time and manpower? It's the taxpayers. Now, does the airport man, how does the airport manager, the county engineer, and a hired engineering consultant not know what's required to build a storage hangar? Who determines that a deep sink and a hot water heater have to be in a storage hangar versus a maintenance hangar? That's the other two items that were thrown up on this, that weren't on the site plan that held up the development order or the hangar that we approved nine months ago. So how did that, how did that occur? And why wasn't it corrected in a more timely manner? And is there a determination to be made on whether or not the water heater and the, and the deep sink is even needed? We're adding, we're now adding restroom facilities to it, too. Who pays for the cost overruns and the elect, and who will pay for the electric to run the water heater? I'm sure it'll come out of the airport funding, but it's still questionable to me as to why we'd put those items in, hangars that are provided just for storing aircraft. Then the other story is, at the same time, less than a half mile away, an almost identical story, constant delays because of mistakes, misinterpreted codes, and poor communication. Two hangars laying on the ground for months that should have been erected and generating revenue. The county departments that are responsible for issuance of development orders and permits, site review, must recognize the cost of delays to private industry that is willing to invest in our county. Common sense, not just the code book, has to be the new normal. Where an opinion is required, the code needs to lean towards development. Where delays are placed in front of us, we need to offer phasing approach to keep the project moving, not just slap on stop orders. An example is splash out here on Highway 87. They were given a stop order because they were out there cutting with a gyrotract clearing property. Nothing, no land disturbance, but gyrotracting, but they were given a stop order, but at no time was it offered to them to go ahead and employ a land, a land clearing permit so you could continue. There's hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of equipment sitting here, and all we tell them is stop working. We don't give them another option. They were also told they have pipe in bundles, they have culverts sitting there, concrete culverts all sitting on the property for installation. Once the development order is placed, they were told they couldn't put those things on that property. That's ridiculous, to tell a private property owner that you can't store something on your property until you're ready to use it. I find it hard, hard to understand that. So I know a lot of this is brought on by the developers. I've been doing this and checking on this for years, where an engineer points at our county and our county officials as the problem, only to discover it's actually the engineer's problem, that they haven't responded to our questions, but they throw us under the bus and saying us, I'm part of the county, too, just like each one of you gentlemen and everybody on staff. And certainly we'll get back with the developer or the person that's got the money coming out of their pocket and correct that when it's, when I, you know, when I know about it. But again, and too many times, we're not providing them options to keep these projects moving. This all means revenue to our county, means tax being generated, it means, you know, more people working. We just gotta start moving this government part of this forward to the recognition that when you hold up a big project like that, it costs a lot of money. Sure, you're still, you're still gonna get your paycheck from the county, but what are you doing to harm other people's paychecks that we need to be moving forward with? I'd like for us to, I'd like for the county administrator have, to tell Roger to have the cost estimates ready for approval by next week. If those estimates are under what he can approve without it coming to the board, then don't even bring it back to us. But if it needs to be approved by the board, certainly, certainly have it on the next agenda. And I'd like for him to include both fire hydrants, for both projects. The one for our hangars and also the one for the other FBO's hangars. They, that's our infrastructure out there, that belongs to the county. If there needs to be a fire hydrant to satisfy the construction of more hangars on our facility, even though it's leased to somebody else, it'll always remain property of Santa Rosa County, and I think we should have that ready. I was told that both these hangars could be up and ready to go in 60 days. We need to have those fire hydrants in place so this Royals Department can issue COs. And I just don't want to see any more delays on either one of these projects. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Blaylock?
Thank you. Commissioner Cole, you brought up a number of points, and the first, I think the most critical point I'd like to clarify is that the grant timeline. There was information at one time we would receive that that grant expired June 2020, and I would agree with you, if that were the case, we would be in a critical timeframe. However, I have confirmed through the Florida Department of Transportation, Public Transportation Section with airports that our timeline actually is June 2021. So the grant funds are intact and secure. The second thing that you related, would like to address is the timeline. The Board of Commissioners indeed did approve a design-build contract in July of this past year. The contractor and well-coast constructor proceeded with obtaining their architect and working on a metal building to provide those 13 T-hangers. At that same time that that was going on, the site plan was submitted from our consultant, who is Mont McDonald, and the issues arose of relative to the fire hydrants. The fire hydrants are not impeding the building permit. Santa Rosa County has committed, from the very beginning it came to my attention that we would install those. We fully anticipate them being within the authority of the administrator through our procurement process, and we are working towards developing a spec so we can get those quotes in a timely fashion. The building department, who did the review for the building plans, brought the 500 feet versus 400 feet to our attention. We have available to project our existing hydrants out there. The unfortunate thing is they are not within the new 400-foot requirement for the further extent of the structure. And those changes were sent back to the building contractor, and he is in the process of getting his architect to modify. The tub sinks and heaters and water heaters and those sets, those are requirements of the, of the National Building Code that were not included in our design-build plans.
And why not? We, we pay Hatchmont McDonald a lot of money to do all this planning for this airport. You're the county, county engineer that's supposed to know all these rules and regulations, and yet we, we get this far down the road. Nine months it's been since we authorized that. And that's, that's just unacceptable. I mean, that should have been, that should have been in the original plan. If that's the code, that's the law, then why weren't they in the original plans? That's, that's my question.
We had a discussion with the architect that we hired through the design-build contract on why he didn't meet our, the National Building Code. And I got to tell you, Commissioner, I am not gonna sit and, and, and say I know all of those codes, but certainly we did respond and we found out about them.
Well, all right, so where are we at with getting the fire, fire hydrant? I need the rest of the board to agree to install the hydrants for the Milton FBOs, the aviation partners, 'cause again, that should have been brought out at first, and it's basically, it's our infrastructure out there. So if our infrastructure is insufficient, then it's my feeling as one commissioner that we go ahead and bid this out all as one package and get it done for them.
Thank you, Commissioner Cole, and that's something that I have not been following, was not aware of any delays. Dan, can you get with Commissioner Cole and Roger and get the issue with the fire hydrants resolved? And then Commissioner Cole, if you want to give the board an update at our next meeting, we'd appreciate it.
I can do that. I, I just, I wasn't staying on top of it either, Mr. Chairman, because I thought everything should be progressing as it should. And then when I went by there and seen rusty metal sitting on the ground instead of a new hangar standing there, that's what brought my concerns up. And then I found out that, you know, the FBO was gonna be required to put that fire hydrant in themselves, and I, I just totally disagree with that. That's, if this was property that they owned, paid taxes on, and sure, they don't pay a big, high lease fee, but they're employing people, they're putting buildings on the ground that'll be there a long time after all of us are gone and, and become property of Santa Rosa County, I feel it's only fair for us to provide that much of the infrastructure for them. And I don't know, Dan, if you need board support to do that, then I'd like to ask for that now. If, if we can make that call, just working me and you and the county engineer, then I'm fine with that, too.
I think I would offer, sir, we need the county attorney to, to review the lease agreement. I know it's a, a long-term lease with our FBOs at, at Peter Prince Airport, but I think making sure that we comply with the terms of the lease agreement as far as who is providing what infrastructure and then who owns the infrastructure at the end. We have that in most of our management agreements. I have not personally reviewed the FBO leases, but I think with Roy and I, we can do that. Mark's working this with Roger, so we can bring that to the board if it needs to come to the board. If it's covered already in the terms of the lease, then once we have the, the pricing, we can go ahead and execute the project if it's under the county administrator's threshold. Otherwise, it would all come back to the board. So I, I think there's a way ahead here, but I think we have to bring the attorney in and the lease aspect as far as those capital improvements, and, but we can certainly get an answer.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate you working on this, and let's get these things stood up instead of laying on the ground. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Cole, for bringing that forward. Next, we'll move, Commissioner Peach.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cole, I, I kind of look at it like, you know, if I own a rental house and some of my infrastructure goes, it's not necessarily in the lease for the tenant to do that. So I'm real interested to see what these long-term lease agreements see, because we've kind of seen it in the past with like the pure, you know, substantial infrastructure improvements. Who, who owns those? So I definitely think we need to iron that out. But I kind of, on a simplistic level, if I'm a landlord, you know, there are certain things I gotta do and certain things tenants have to do, so I'd be interested to see what we find out.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, next we'll move into Budget and Financial Management Committee. Commissioner Parker?
Thank you. Apologize about the cough. I know y'all have been around me long enough to know I get the seasonal allergies. I'm on the flu, and they started up at the beginning of the week, you know, keep me in your prayers, that's nothing more serious. But the good news is, is I'm
But the good news is, is I'm young and otherwise semi-healthy, so hopefully we'll, we'll make it through. All right, now back to the Budget and Financial Management Committee. Item number one is discussion and approval. Uh-oh, I just heard another cough. Sinuses, sinuses might be contagious, so we'll self-quarantine for the next fourteen days until the next meeting, other than the hardware store. All right. Discussion and approval of Budget Amendment twenty twenty dash one thirty-nine in the amount of twenty thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars for emergency work to repair a lead, I believe is what it's supposed to say, but it may be lead, broken rail, I guess it would be a lead broken rail in the industrial park to be funded from the economic development electric franchise fees. If there's no discussion, I'd recommend approving that without objection.
Hearing none, that is approved.
Item number two is approval of Budget Amendment twenty twenty dash one four zero in the amount of eighty-five thousand four hundred dollars to recognize the state E nine one one grant and allocate for expenditure for software and data support as approved at the November twelfth, twenty nineteen meeting. Recommend approving that without objection.
Hearing none, it's approved.
Item number three is a discussion of a approval of a Budget Amendment twenty twenty dash one four one, and this is concerning previous board action from October twenty-fourth of last year. I'd recommend approving that without objection.
Hearing none, it's approved.
Item number four is a discussion of approval of Budget Amendment twenty twenty dash one four two, and this is in the amount of four hundred seventeen thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars to fund the complete Godwin Connector project. This will be with Area Three Transportation Impact Fee Funds as approved previously at the March twenty-six, twenty twenty meeting. Recommend approving that without objection.
Hearing none, it's approved.
Item number five is a discussion and approval of Budget Amendment twenty twenty dash one four three in the amount of ninety-nine thousand nine, nine hundred ninety-eight dollars to reflect actual impact fee reserve balances as a result of the internal impact fee audit performed by the OMB. I'd recommend approving that without objection.
Hearing none, it's approved.
Item number six is discussion and approval of Budget Amendment twenty twenty dash one four four in the amount of one hundred ninety-three thousand seven hundred twelve dollars to modify Budget Amendments twenty twenty dash one two two and twenty twenty dash one two three as a result of the OMB's impact fee audit. The match for the King Middle School Sidewalk Project and Hamilton Bridge sidewalks required additional general fund reserves in the amount of one hundred ninety-three thousand seven hundred twelve dollars. Recommend approving that without objection.
Hearing none, it's approved.
Item number seven is a discussion and approval of Budget Amendment twenty twenty dash one four five in the amount of one hundred twenty thousand to recognize Restore Act funding and allocate for expenditure for the Blackwater Heritage State Trail Improvements. The funding will be for the purchase of the items to be installed in the construction contract for the project, and we had discussed this at a previous meeting. Recommend approving that without objection.
Hearing none, it's approved.
Item number eight is discussion and approval of Budget Amendment twenty twenty dash one four six, the amount of thirty-two thousand dollars to carry forward funding of Task Order twenty twenty dash oh one, and this is for the Jacobs slash CH two M to provide professional engineering services for preparation and submittal of a substantial modification permit application to the current FDEP permit for the Santa Rosa County Regional Reuse System, otherwise referred to as the Eglin Ribs, and this was previously approved in the March twelfth, twenty twenty meeting. Recommend approving that without objection.
Hearing none, it's approved.
Item number nine is the check register. I'd recommend approving that without objection.
Hearing none, that's approved.
All right, and that concludes that committee report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner Parker. So that concludes the regular agenda. Want to remind everyone, these census forms have come out now, so that is vitally important for Santa Rosa County over the next decade. So if you get your census form in the mail, please follow the instructions there and return that. Any other questions, comments from the commissioners? We have one member of the public who has shown up. Let me, Commissioner Cole. Commissioner Salter.
Mr. Chairman, I want to say thank you for stepping up today and running the meeting. I want to remind everybody that we're going through some very unfamiliar times. I would encourage everyone to stay calm, take personal responsibility, listen to the directions coming from the federal government, the state government, and we'll do our part at the local government. Thank you for running the meeting today. Good job.
Thank you, Commissioner Salter. I have big shoes to attempt to fill and look forward to seeing you back in this seat soon. Mr. Cooley?
Thank you. Jerry Cooley, sixty forty-nine, Arnie's Way. I got a call over the impact fee issue. Would you, would you tell me what we're doing there?
The commissioner raised the idea of postponing the implementation of the impact fees. We declined to do that, said we would seek input from the superintendent and the school board and then discuss that at a future meeting, but since it was not on the agenda, we did not want to take any action or discuss that in any detail today.
And it's my understanding that Bob Cole brought that forward?
Yes.
Well, here's, here's what I have to say about that. We've, we've had conversations about procedures in the past, and Commissioner Lynchard and those of you that are here today, I appreciate you postponing it. I think it's the right thing to do. To Commissioner Cole specifically, you had Monday, it could have been brought up, it could have been on the agenda. This is a slap in the face on procedures. And, you know, when, when everybody's trying to social distance themselves with the coronavirus, when people are out trying to catch up on projects and they're not paying attention, I'll tell you what the perception is. The perception is not a good one, Commissioner Cole, and I felt like it needed to be put on the record. I don't know what this board's going to decide about impact fees. I appreciate the fact that it is going to be pushed and, and give everybody an opportunity to say it, but the perception is another slap in the face to the citizens of Santa Rosa County. Thank you all.
Thanks, Jerry. And that's, that's exactly why we, we decided to take no action or go into any discussion in depth on that. We didn't want to really bring anything up that engenders a lot of public input when we don't have that opportunity for the, the public to be present in the room with us. Any other comments or questions?
Just to point out, the next, next regularly scheduled meeting will be April ninth of this board. If we're monitoring the, the situation and the state press conferences, state conference calls, the National Association of Counties, FAC, and the, and the federal direction in this emergency situation, and we will call additional meetings if, if required, but at this point in time, our next scheduled meeting would be April ninth.
Commissioner Peach?
Just one, we did have an election a couple of weeks ago, and just to let the public know, we are having the last canvassing board meeting tomorrow at three thirty to certify the official results and count all the overseas ballots that come in from the military. So that presidential primary wraps up tomorrow. I know it seems like forever ago that we had that, but I think we had about a twenty-five percent voter turnout for the PPP, which was impressive given the circumstances out there. And just a shout out to our election officials, because I think they did a great job in the face of adversity, and, and everyone at the polls was pleased with the way they handled the folks and were able to keep them safe, so.
All right. Nothing further coming in front of the board. Again, I would ask everyone to go to santarosa dot FL dot gov, sign up for our mailing lists, our email blasts, and follow the guidance and instruction from our local Department of Health, the State Department of Health, and the CDC. Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For Mr. Cooley's information, I intended to put this on the next agenda, the discussion, so we'd have time, but as, as Roy pointed out, that would have fallen over a deadline to advertise it. So that was the necessity of moving it forward today and getting it in discussion. So I just wanted to put that out there. And Mr. Chairman, I'd like for Dan to consider appointing somebody in a vehicle as a dispatcher to Commissioner Salter and myself. I know we could do all the paperwork over the internet and email, but when Ms. Salter makes them cakes and pies and such as that, I don't, I'm concerned with Commissioner Salter's health and him having to eat all that itself, so if they could maybe pick that up and bring it back to the boardroom, that would be appreciated. So, thank you.
We'll see what we can do, Commissioner Cole. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one, one plug, I just thought about this, and I really didn't realize, sometimes we do take for granted that we are so blessed, you don't think about other people in situation. Our pastor pointed out last night that there's some folks that, you know, I know a lot of folks in Santa Rosa County attend church on a regular basis, and there are a lot of churches, especially the smaller ones, that, that have not been prepared in the past to livestream so that their members can attend church while, during this time, when I would, I think the vast majority of churches and pastors are heeding the advisory to, to not hold service. So I just wanted to mention, for anybody that goes to a church in Santa Rosa County or neighboring county, anywhere really in the world now, if your church is closed and they don't have the ability to livestream, we're still livestreaming at our church, I know other churches are, but I at least wanted to make that opportunity, especially in a time where a lot of folks in the community are fearful, that you can just go to YouTube or go to paceassembly.org or type in Pace Assembly of God on YouTube, and you can watch those services, and hopefully folks will find comfort in, in that. I, I think we had a great message last night that times of crisis or panic, as Commissioner Lynchard stated at the beginning of the meeting, and I know he is a Christian as well, that this is a time to stay calm. You know, God will, God will remain consistent, and he will outlast this issue as well as all other issues. So thank you for letting me point that out. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Parker. We are adjourned.